Good evening, welcome to the November seventeenth, twenty twenty-five Troy City Council Meeting. This evening, we're honored to have Public Affairs Director Pervais Khan from the Ahmadiyya Muslim Community provide our invocation, so please rise if you are able and remain standing if our pledge of allegiance.
(Singing) Auzu Billahimina Shaytaanir Rajim. Bismillahir Rahmanir Rahim. Alhamdulillah, Rabbil Alameen. Ar Rahmanir Rahim. Iyaqanaabudu, wa iyaqanaastain. Ehdenas siraatal mustaqim. Siraatal ladina an amta alaihim. Gairil maghdhubi alaihim. Walad dawallin. In the name of Allah, the gracious, the merciful. All praises belong to Allah, the Lord of all the worlds. The gracious, the merciful. The master of the day of judgment. Thee alone do we worship, and thee alone do we implore for help. Guide us in the right path. The path of those on whom Thou hast bestowed thy blessings. Those who have not incurred thy display here, and those who have not gone astray. Ameen.
(Inaudible)
(Inaudible)
All right, well, exciting night here in the city of Troy. Before we call the meeting to order, it's time to swear in our newly elected council members. We will do it in alphabetical order, which means our first up is our newest member, Anna Lisa Bloom. If you please come down. Well, no one ever goes that way.[408.53][408.53](Laughter) Trendsetter, you're a trendsetter already.[414.13][414.13](Laughter)
(Inaudible, yes.)
I do solemnly swear that I support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, the Charter of the City of Troy, and that I will faithfully perform the duties of the office of City Council Member in and for the City of Troy, County of Oakland, State of Michigan according to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Councilmember Rebecca Chamberlain.
I do solemnly swear that I support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, the Charter of the City of Troy, and that I will faithfully perform the duties of the office of City Council Member in and for the City of Troy, County of Oakland, State of Michigan according to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
And Councilmember David Hamilton.
I do solemnly swear that I support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, the Charter of the City of Troy, and that I will faithfully perform the duties of the office of City Council Member in and for the City of Troy, County of Oakland, State of Michigan according to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Congratulations to the three of you. Even though I haven't called this meeting to order, we're going to take a five to ten minute recess. If anyone wants to do any pictures, then some of you will probably leave, so I'm going to have it be in a recess. City Council meeting to order, and ask for the roll call from Ms. Dixon.
Mayor Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Bloom.
Here.
Councilmember Brooks.
Here.
Councilmember Chamberlain.
Here.
Mayor Protamchanda.
Here.
Councilmember Gunn.
Here.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Here.
All present this evening. First up on the agenda, certificates of recognition and special presentations. We have two of them. First up, C1 is a legislative update by Senator Mike Weber. Welcome, Senator.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and council members, and congratulations to the returning, new council member, and look forward to working with you. So, Michael Weber, I do serve as the state senator for the Ninth District, which includes, obviously, Troy, greater Rochester area, Sterling Heights, Utica, and Shelby Township. And as you know, you know, come at least a couple of times a year and try to do a legislative update. So now, obviously, you know, last time we talked about what may happen with the budget, now we do have a budget. And, you know, there's some highlights, there's maybe some not great stuff in there as well. But in terms of the state budget, you know, like families all over Michigan, state government must live within its means, and supported a very strong bipartisan budget, rolls back spending for the first time in years, helps workers by eliminating taxes on tips, overtime, and social security, and makes needed investments in our roads by finally putting every penny paid in taxes at the pump back into fixing our vital infrastructure. And as I mentioned before, the focus was on local roads, and so the results are Troy will receive thirty-one percent increase or close to three point eight million in additional money yearly for local roads, for a total of over fifteen million dollars on an annual basis. Oakland County is going to receive a thirty-six percent increase or close to forty-eight million in additional money for county and local roads yearly. And then, the bipartisan roads plan will invest close to two billion dollars of long-term road funding annually, and annually is the critical part, because a lot of times it's one-time funding, this is going to be on an ongoing basis because of some of the changes that were made in terms of taxes. And the plan also includes dedicated funds, tackle our state's bridge repair backlog, so a hundred million dollars annually added to the local bridge program. So, of course, that's important as well. So, that's the good part. Obviously, the bad part is, in terms of the state sales tax on the pump, we're seeing a reduced revenue sharing. We think it's about five point five percent when combined with the new public safety trust fund, so I'll talk about that in a little bit. So, the good and bad. On the good side, you know, folks that have been following this issue for a while, you know, of course, the House has their bills as it relates to revenue-sharing trust fund. Now, the Senate also has legislation, and I'm happy to be part of that bipartisan bill package again with Senator Moss and Senator Cherry. The bills, if you want to follow them, our Senate bills, five-five-nine through five-six-one, and they're before the Senate Appropriations Committee. So, we're hoping, again, to get traction on that this session. As you recall, the House passed them pretty unanimously, and maybe a couple of no votes, and it just did not come up in the Senate in twenty-twenty-four. And then, in terms of the public safety trust fund, this was an issue that was starting to be championed by former Speaker Joe Tate and Mayor Mike Duggan. It's ninety-five million set aside for new local, public safety-focused programs, provide cities, villages, townships, counties, additional resources for law enforcement, prosecution, other public safety-related recruitment, retention, training, firefighting, equipment needs, as well as support community violence intervention efforts. Best we can tell, Troy will tentatively receive around ninety-five thousand dollars from that public safety trust fund. I think, obviously, where a lot of the communities of the Ninth District get lesser dollars is because we've got lower crime rates in our communities, and obviously, that's a good thing. And I will say that there's already been some discussion or some hope that maybe we'll continue to look at that funding formula and how that could potentially be tweaked down the road. But, you know, at least that's something that we can look forward to. So, a quick update on I-75 sound wall construction. You know, obviously, most folks know twenty-three, secure ten million of the fourteen million needed to fund the project. Final designs approvals, I believe, are done at this point, and they're being completed to start the bid letting process in December. Construction is still on track to start in early twenty-twenty-six, with it to be finished by the fall of twenty-sixth, weather permitting, I think MDOT contractually obligates me to say that. Then, you know, we talked about the sound wall funding mechanism legislation, still working through that. The House did pass out a committee, their version, and then I reintroduced Senate Bill eighty. And, you know, as you guys know, currently, Michigan is solely reliant on federal dollars to fund sound walls. This bill would help communities apply for grants through MDOT for the purpose of constructing sound walls. So, and I did have office hours earlier, and some folks from the resident sound wall group came, and we talked about some of the process and making sure the sound wall is going to do what we say and think it's going to do. And I'm not an engineer, but that is the goal when you're spending fourteen billion in state taxpayer dollars. So, lastly, I just wanted to put on your radar, a little bit different subject, but dealing with mental health issues, which is really a big issue in our state and nationally and globally. So, office of recipient rights. I called for an independent audit on how our state hospitals protect our kids and adults receiving mental health care. The audit came back, it shows our Department of Health and Human Services failing to protect the rights of our kids and adults when receiving mental health treatment. The audit found eight total findings, with four being material findings, the most severe. To give you an idea, one of my colleagues who has chaired oversight for a number of years, he told me if there was one material finding, that's usually a fairly decent-sized deal. So, four is off the rails. So, we did have a hearing in the House Oversight Committee, I was able to testify in front of that committee, and Rep. McDonald was part of that. And I will say, on a bipartisan basis, I was very proud of the entire committee for the questions they asked and the concern that they have for our folks dealing with mental health issues. So, working with my colleagues to fix our state hospital system and hold state officials accountable for their failures, as shown in the audit, so there's a process we're going through on that in terms of things that they need to respond to and that kind of thing. Lastly, for residents here at home, for more information, sign up for our monthly e-news, please visit SenatorMichaelWeber.com or call our office at five-one-seven-three-seven-three-zero-nine-nine-four. And that's the update, so, and I can take some questions.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Councilmember Hamilton.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Senator, for updating us as always. My question was, could we either get a link to or keep us updated on when those bids for the sound wall go out? I'd like to kind of see that happen as it goes about, and I can inform residents and ask me about it and everything.
Yes.
I don't know if there's like public websites that show the bids, or I haven't gone on that for state.
Yeah, so after the residents came tonight, Bryce was with me, and actually, Bryce has been the point person on the sound wall issue, and so he's going to be reaching out to MDOT tomorrow about just kind of exactly how the design went, and, you know, trying to get as much information as we can publicly share, yeah, we'd be happy to work through, you know, the city manager's office to get that to everybody.
I know, we were working at this so long, so it's nice to know it's coming. As far as the extra road funding, I know that for the next year, you said thirty-one percent increase, and then I think in subsequent years, it's a little more than that, right? How, I know each year, there's a state budget, so that's subject to change, right? I know with the change in the tax format, everything, it's a little more secured, but how, as we do our budgeting process, our six-year capital plans, how confident should we be that that will still be here?
Yeah, that's a good question. I think it's, and I remember, we talked about this a little bit at the last meeting, I think it's really based on the formula, and this money is kind of set aside more for local roads versus going in through that Act fifty-one formula. And so, the end product, because I think people recognize the need for the local road funding, I know in McComb County, which I also represent, you know, hackles already brought, like a lot of the mayors and supervisors into even to talk about it, and of course, you know, every community, as we talked about it, probably has a list as long as there are, you know, of projects that need to happen. But, no, I feel very confident that unless the legislature goes back and kind of tweaks that formula, that it will be, it will continue to be, you know, in that two billion or more range, and that it will be dedicated to local roads, and I think that that's, I think that that's appropriate, given kind of the short change that local roads have been getting from the state to this point.
And it's based on the tax revenue, right? Not on like a fixed amount, so it'll adjust for inflation?
Yes.
And all that? Okay, good. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Councilmember Gunn.
The fifteen million, except, well, I think the last time you were here, it's possibly seventeen, so it's pretty close, I appreciate that, but is that above, wasn't this going to be above what we were going to get originally?
So, the, and I don't have it up again, but I believe fifteen million is the total amount, but yeah, it's going to be about three point eight million in additional money. So, overall, the way the House originally passed the bill, they were trying to get more road dollars than the two billion, the two billion was kind of like a compromise, and, but still a very healthy amount, and I think there'll be further discussions down the road on how we can try to get even more dollars into local roads, but for the time being, it's locked in on the two billion, and then if we can do more, we'll try to do more in future budgets.
But we get, one thing you brought up was the reduction on sales tax on the gas, which will affect the amount that we get for roads, right?
Well, it'll affect the revenue-sharing piece of it more, yeah.
Do you associate that with electric vehicles or population decrease?
You know, it's basically, you know, we always had, we're one of a handful of states that had, in the past tense, sales tax on gas. So, a lot of states just have gas tax, and so we, going forward, are just going to have a gas tax, but to try to make it revenue-neutral, we phased out that sales tax. And, again, I wasn't part of the end negotiation, but the thought was to hold schools harmless on the lost sales tax revenue, but not municipal. And so, again, that's why I bring it up in transparency, and I think that proves our point even more that we need the revenue-sharing trust fund piece of it, but, you know, I think if we can go back and do something on that down the road, I'd be happy to look into that because it is less money for cities than, you know, municipalities than it is for schools in terms of how the sales tax formula works, but that's still, and then, when you looked at it, it was pretty similar to the ninety-five million in the public safety trust fund, or, yeah. So, I think the speaker, different people like that, they looked at it like, you know, they're going to get this public safety trust fund money, but obviously, it's not, you know, as equitable as the revenue-sharing piece used to be, so.
Last question on the walls, thanks for sticking with that. Appreciate following through on that, but we got ten million allocated, the fourteen, the four million difference, is that?
So, the four million, originally Senator McMurro, and I think Rep. Cooper worked on the four million, so it's fourteen million total, and that's going to be the project.
You got the full funds then?
Yes, yep, fourteen, yep.
Great, that's good news.
Yep.
Unfortunately, costs are down in the past couple of years, is that what they're saying? Good shape?
We'll see, we'll see. Well, and actually, MDOT came to us around this time last year and said, "Look, you know, you're going to need to get more money," and we said, "Well, that's your problem and not our problem." And they sent us a letter back to Rep. McDonald, and I said, "Okay, fine, we'll figure it out in the budget."
Councilmember Chamberlain.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Senator. I think you answered this, but you have a point person who is alerting the residents on the stages of the sound wall, so they're aware of what's happening, right?
Yeah, Bryce has been in pretty good contact with the rain, and then, yeah, I saw the rain tonight, and, yeah, so we are, if anything, we're going to try to see what type of information to Councilmember Hamilton's point that we can get, you know, in people's hands on that, yeah, so.
In your SB eighty, you said that passed out a committee?
So, the House version did. The House version, Rep. Robinson's bill, yeah, passed out a committee.
And then, with revenue-sharing trust funds, so it's good as an appropriations, but given there's a decrease, that makes more of a case for us as municipalities to want a dedicated fund, like a fund that you can go to. How optimistic are you? And is this something that has to pass out a committee by the end of this year?
No. No, it's, it's end of, it's end of 26th of the session. You know, I think it's, on a bipartisan basis, some of the pushback that we've gotten is that the revenue sharing trust fund is seen as less flexibility for appropriators when they're putting their budget together, which is, again, exactly what we like about it. And so, whether, you know, there's people on both sides of the aisle that have kind of given this argument to us, so it's not really a one, one way or the other, but it's, you know, for it to have such a strong vote in the House last session, you know, it's disheartening, but we keep working on it, and, you know, Senator Cherry's been a good advocate, he, he runs like the, kind of like the local government budget in the Senate, and he's been working, you know, last session with Senator Moss and myself, he's, he's part of the package now as well, and, yeah, so I think you have good advocates for it, it's just trying to get, get across the finish line. So, you know, obviously, you guys, I represent you, so I can't tell you to go, but other friends in the legislature that you have, if you want to reach out to them, I think, you know, people you see, you know, at different events and this and that, I think, just trying to build up that critical mass, particularly in the Senate, because we didn't really have a vote in the Senate last time, so.
Any additional questions?
I appreciate it, all right. We'll see you, thank you.
Next up is C-2 fiscal year 2025 audit presentation, and there's three components to that. I see our CFO, Rob Melzick, is coming up. I'll let you take it, Rob.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Very blessed to be here tonight to talk to you about the 2025 audit presentation. Alan Panther from Yo &amp; Yo is here, this is his third year presenting in front of you, and there will be three deliverables tonight. One is the independent auditors communication with those charged with governance, that's you guys. Secondly, there will be the single audit report, and thirdly, the financial audit report, which I believe you received hard copies of even last week. So, without further ado, we're going to pass it over to Alan, and then Kyle and I will have four short slides after that.
Thanks, Rob. Good evening. As Rob said, my name is Alan Panther, I'm a partner at Yo &amp; Yo, and I'm here to present the audit. One thing that, that Rob mentioned, that the single audit report was distributed to you guys as a draft, we are not going to be able to issue the single audit report at this point, because we have not received the, the, the compliance supplement from the federal government because of the shutdown, we're waiting for this compliance supplement. As soon as we get the compliance supplement, we'll check our procedures that we've done against what they want, and then we'll issue the single audit. But it's done, we've got it as far as we can, everything is done with the regular audit, the financial statements have been issued, it's really just that compliance supplement piece that we're waiting on with the feds, so. The audit went very well, the finance staff at the city did a great job of responding to our information requests, to answering our questions and working with us throughout the audit process. We really appreciate how well-prepared the city was for the audit, and how easy everyone was to work with. We, we worked with quite a few people at the city for, during the audit, but we'd really like to thank Rob, your CFO, and Kyle, your controller, they did an amazing job of pulling everything together and doing everything that needed to be done to get the report issued actually in October, so that's, that's really good, a lot of communities can't say that, so, so thank you very much. Our audit included an examination of the internal controls in place of the city, as well as certain aspects of legal compliance. So, based on that study of internal controls and also compliance, we have a responsibility to communicate in writing when we find certain things in our audit. So, I'm pleased to report that, based on that study of internal controls and compliance, we have no audit findings, we have no management letter comments, no single audit issues, so no federal compliance issues as well. So, those are all good things and reflect very positively on the city and its management. All right, so I have a presentation here that I'm going to run through, hopefully pretty quickly, and get you onto your next item of the agenda. So, the first slide deals with the independent auditors report. The purpose of an audit is to give you an opinion on your financial statements, not to detect fraud and not to give assurance and internal control. So, it's a very important concept about what it is that we're here to do. We're here to give you an opinion on your financial statements, which is what this slide is referencing. So, we're giving what's called an unmodified or clean opinion, that is the best opinion you can get, and it means a couple of things. It means, first of all, the statements are formatted in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, so in other words, everything that's supposed to be in the financial statements is there, and also based on the procedures that were performed, the numbers were good. So, unmodified opinion is definitely what you want to see. Okay. All right. This next slide, I'm going to give you a quick definition, because it's going to set up the slides that I'm going to talk about next. So, these next several slides deal with governmental funds, and what I mean by that, that includes the city's general funds, special revenue funds, debt service funds, capital projects and per, and permanent funds. It does not include funds that are accounted for as enterprise funds, so that's water, sewer, golf courses, those are supported by user charges, so that's, that's not what I'm talking about in those slides there, so I just want to cover that. So, these activities are primarily supported by property taxes, grants, state shared revenues, and other sources, okay? So, we'll go right into these, the next one. All right, so I've got a five-year graph of revenues, expenditures. You can see the total fund balance is the green line there, and then your capital outlay, so that's the amount of capital spending that goes into what you see there. So, you can see some trends here, you can see the revenues have been increasing the last four years, that's mainly property taxes, there's some grants in there, there's actually quite a lot of grants in there, intergovernmental revenue, that sort of thing. Expenditures have been flat the last three years, so if you look at the last three years of expenditures in those governmental funds, they're pretty much flat. So, we'll look closer at those trends in the next couple of slides, and then the fund balance, you can see that green line, your fund balance has been going up the last couple of years, so after a downward drop during the post-COVID years, but now it's pretty much back to where it was before COVID. And you can see that in the far right there, the city has, has turned over some pretty good investment returns the last couple of years, so that's, that's really good, there were some losses there. Of course, the city's restricted as far as what it connects, invests in, so within those boundaries, they were able to, to have a good return this year. All right, next slide. This is governmental funds expenditures, again, five-year comparison, this year, this one, we broke down the eight main expenditure areas that the city has, has. So, like most communities, public safety is the largest cost center, that's your police and fire. You can see that those expenditures were increasing incrementally each year until 2023, the big increase you see there is the, the impact of the VFP closure, that was a big deal a couple of years ago, but it really stands out. You can also see that the city has continued to invest in its parks, so the recreation and culture has gone up steadily, and also capital outlay, you can see that that was, last year, there was a, a pretty good spike, most of that was roads from last year, you can see that this year is a little lower, but still quite healthy, that was invested back in the city, so. Another note is the city is not making all of these improvements by issuing debt, you can see that the debt service over there is very low, and definitely on the low side for a city of this size. All right, next one. So, this is a 10-year graph of capital outlay, so these are basically all of the capital improvements that the city makes, paying for with the governmental funds, show it for the last 10 years. So, you can see if, if, last year was quite high, this year, if you kind of, if you take out last year and kind of look at that versus 21, 22, 23, you can kind of see a, a nice trend upwards there, so, but this is, these are the investments in the city and its infrastructure that will benefit the residents for years to come. Okay, next one. This is a history of fund balance in the general fund, so fund, not in the general fund, in the governmental funds. So, fund balances broke down into a few components, non-spendable, restricted, committed, assigned, and unassigned. So, the non-spendable portion is mostly due to advances made to the golf course, Sanctuary Lake, and also the Aquatic Center, is up this year due to some prepaid expenditures in the Capital Project Fund. Restricted fund balance, that is money that's been given to the city for a specific purpose by an outside entity, usually the state or federal government, and unassigned is just the general fund, and it's up this year with property values going up, so your fund balance improved in the general fund, so you can see that showing up in the unassigned, property values going up, much better investment performance, as I already mentioned. All right, I only have two more, well, two more graphs. Okay, so the, this next, this one here talks about the water fund, so we're not talking about the governmental funds anymore, I'm going to talk about the water fund, so this is funded by user charges, and I like to use graphs to analyze these funds, because it really helps to see the trends that drive the results that we're seeing. So, first of all, you can see each year that expenses are exceeding revenues by at least a little bit, so that means that you're spending more than what you're bringing in in those funds each year, in the water fund. I understand the city regularly raises the rate, these rates, so it'll be important to continue that trend, so that there are sufficient resources to operate the system. You can also see that the, the green line there is the unrestricted net position, so that's basically your fund balance, and you can see that that's trending down and it's getting close to, to zero. Of course, the, the scale here is a lot, it's 4.1 million compared to operating revenues and expenses of over 23, so it looks like it's getting close to zero, but it's, it's still $4 million that the fund balance is there. But you can see how it compares to past years, in 2021, it was 10 million, so this, this, the water system is, 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 is trending in a, in a, not, not turning in a positive direction. One positive thing that I do take out of this graph is the top line there, that top line has to do with the value of the water system, it's minus depreciation, minus debt, of course, you don't have a lot of debt, so the, where that line is in relation to your revenues and expenses tells me that you've got a fairly young and healthy system there in place, so you've made investments and kind of kept up with that, and so you've got, you've got a good solid water system in place. I know they work on it all the time, but from this level, what I'm seeing here looks pretty good. All right, next one is the sewer, this is very similar to the water fund graph, expenses exceed revenues every year, unrestricted net position has declined as a result, however, the unrestricted net position now sits at 8.7 million, which is about 55%, so this fund's a little better off than the water fund, so still quite good, and the investment in capital assets, the yellow line at the top is, is very similar for, for the sewer fund versus the water. All right, next one deals with the governance letter. So, the governance letter is a communication that we issued that you have, that's a required communication, we do it with every audit. The letter discloses any estimates used in preparing the financial statements, any new accounting standards, there were two new GASB standards this year, not much of an effect. There's some informational items, talks about any difficulties or disagreements that we had, which there, of course, there were none, any management letter comments were there, and we had none of those, so that's a very good thing, and as I, as I already said that, so, okay. All right, last slide, single audit report. As I mentioned, we were not able to issue the single audit yet due to the federal compliance supplement, but we did do everything that we were supposed to do, we basically followed what we had from last year, and, and we think that that's going to be 99% of it, but we have to make sure. The city expended about $5.1 million in federal awards during the year, we tested economic development grants and received from HUD, along with some road improvement grants as well, so we have to look at certain grants for compliance purposes, and we did that. We don't have any internal control or compliance issues to report with those grants. So, if you have any questions, that's all I have.
Questions from Council? Sign of a really good presentation, no questions.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Looks like Keith's coming up. Thanks, Al.
All right, thanks, Council.
Good evening. My name is Kyle Veeth, I'm the city's controller, and I've been here for about just over four years. So, tonight, I'm going to cover with you a summary of the fiscal year property taxes, our grants, and our results. So, here, this slide shows a summary of the fiscal year 2025 property tax values, as well as the change in revenue from the prior year. So, with the first bullet, we have our fiscal year 2025 assessed value at approximately 8.8 billion, which was an increase of about 8.2% from the prior year. So, when we look at our assessed value, think of kind of like the market sales and kind of the market rate with that. The next bullet, we have our fiscal year 2025 taxable value at 6.6 billion, where that increase was 6.7%, which is a lot less than that assessed value increase, and this is due to Proposal A of 1994, which limits that increase in taxable value to the lesser of 5% or inflation. Here, we had 5%, we had the 5%, but we also had additional growth due to uncapping and new construction, which, one other thing about the taxable value, the city of Troy remains the fourth highest in the state of Michigan, which is just phenomenal, so I think it's just a great, a great thing to, to announce about our city, which then leaves, leads to our property tax revenue of 65.8 billion, or million, which was an increase of 5.9% from the prior year. Here, that increase, again, is a lower percentage, and that's due to the revenue taking a bigger hit because of the headly rollback. So, next, here's some, a little bit of a grant summary. So, since 2021, we have spent about 21.6 million in grant funding, 8.2 million in ARPA funds, 3.5 million in community project funds, which we've worked with Haley Stevens to secure this funding, we had 2.8 million in state grant funding, working with Sharon McDonald to secure the cricket pitch, and Senator Weber, who spoke earlier, to secure a fire truck, which that's still, we got that last year, we're still about two years away from receiving that fire truck, so that lead time is pretty significant. We also have some other significant grants for, you know, Rochester Road, Bowlin Park, and Firefighters Park. Overall, we are seeing grants to dry up a little bit, however, when we are ready, we have, you know, projects ready to go. If we get asked about grants, we tend to focus on, you know, public safety, parks and rec, roads, we like to have a variety, because we never know what the state or the feds are looking for, or what they're going to select, it varies from year to year. And then, lastly, I'm going to close with some budget to actual results for the general fund. So, our revenues exceeded budget by about 7 million this year, with the main drivers being property taxes exceeding by about a million, investment earnings by about 3 million, state shared revenue and grants by 1.2 million, and charges for services by about another million. Our expenditures were below budget by about 5.3 million, which is consistent with prior years, as we do take a conservative approach to budgeting, because we never know what the economy holds or what's going to happen. We also had various cost savings amongst departments, purchasing bit savings, and then, an important one, I think, is our minimal legacy costs related to our pension and retiree healthcare, which I'm now going to turn it over to our CFO, Rob, to cover in more detail.
Thank you, Kyle. Wanted to touch base on pension and retiree healthcare, we haven't talked a lot about this in the past, and so wanted to give you an update on where we stood. Regarding pension, we have not had to make any city contributions since 2017, so what that means is we're what's called overfunded. The pension plan's actually a closed plan with 12 active employees left, but we're also servicing 347 retirees and beneficiaries. There happens to be a, a net pension asset of $81 million currently through this audit, and what that means is that our asset values are above our liabilities, our actuary liabilities by $81 million. Our funding level stands at 152%, and the state requirement, you have to be above 60 or you go on a, a plan where you have to fix that. So, part of our success as a city and our low mileage rate is due to the fact that we do not have to fund a pension and haven't had to do that for almost a decade now. Secondly, we have a retiree healthcare program that, that's been closed since 2006 approximately. City contributions this past year were 1.7 million. Again, it's a closed plan with about 105 active employees in it, and 392 retirees and beneficiaries that we're servicing. That's actually a net pension liability of 7.8 million, and we're almost 95% funded. Again, a lot, the state requirement is to be above 40%, a lot of communities do not even pre-fund this liability, so some people are on a pay-as-you-go process, we actually get an actuary and fund this on an ongoing basis, and we have one of the better funding levels in the state. So, I just wanted to assure those two- So I just wanted to share those two aspects with you, along with everything that Alan and Kyle had mentioned before. It's a very good fiscal year, very good audit, and we're here to answer any questions that you may have. One note there, we got that cover from, that's our, our new pickleball at Firefighters Park. I asked Courtney to get me a, a nice picture of that, and on that cover, we were going to get Rafa Nadal, but we couldn't get that picture, so we got the mayor instead, so.
Thank you, appreciate that. We're closing. First time playing pickleball, right there. Thanks, Rob. Questions for Rob or Kyle?
No question. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much, CFO Malzek, for the presentation. Thank you for the audit. Okay, two questions. One, so our, our general fund balance is obviously over, like what we, it's above our threshold of 20 to 30%. It's at 50% at this point. I know we can only spend the fund balance on single expenditures, one-time expenditures. Do we have an idea of what we are thinking about spending those on? Is it too early to conjecture that, or?
No, absolutely. So, so Kyle and I actually ran those through our models the other day, and so to bring it down to a reasonable balance, down to our 30% minimum, we're going to probably be doing a transfer at budget time of about $7 million from the general fund to the capital fund. And in that process, that's going to go through, that's when the, all the department heads, along with the city manager's office, we're going to be looking at everything all in totality. But usually what wins out is, you know, road, road funding, maybe a fire truck. It, it's going to be all needs, there's not going to be any wants in there. Does that?
Yes.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, yes, it does.
Okay.
Thank you. The other question is, so, you know, obviously, looking at our financials, it's really good. Our, you know, like I said, our, our fund balance is kind of overfunded. So I know that some people in the public might ask us, well, our finances look good. Why did we need the bond?
Sure.
I mean, I know how to answer that, but I would love to hear from you.
Oh, yeah, sure. Yeah, nothing's really changed from a year ago. It's, it's really the same story. Again, operationally, we look good, and we are able to fund some of our smaller projects. But when you look at the long-term goal of the city and saying that we're 70 years old and we need, if, if we eventually want to do a new library, we don't have the money to, to build a, a new library. We don't have all the money to do the projects that we really need to do on some of our major roads. When I talk to my, our city engineer, Scott Finley, there's, there's so much roadwork that needs to be done. So that 7 million that I just referenced, that's going to go to the capital fund, that would do a portion of, let's say, Coolidge. And Coolidge was one of those roads that was on the millage. So those are the types of things. So, yeah, is the world, is the sky falling? No, but long-term, the sustainability, that's a question that
Exactly.
no one can answer.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Gunn?
Kind of the same question, but, so if I'm understanding that revenues are up 7 million, expenses down 5.3, don't we have a little bit more than the 7 million built into the general fund?
Right, so, so some, so when we ran it through our models, we know that we're going to have to, we're going to have to assign funds to, to restrict funds to the golf course. So the golf course is still running at a deficit. Probab, I think we put a million dollars in for that. And then the aquatic center is going to be one of our subsequent notes that we talked about is the aquatic center. The aquatic center, we will be coming to you soon with some funding for the aquatic center, that we're going to need to keep that viable. So there, there's, there's, with, with those processes, the 10 million went down to 7 million for about a $3 million delta of other needs.
Gotcha. Any, any strategy, any plan to try and not be in a deficit with the golf course?
Right, so the golf course has a, a bond that's going to be done in 2020, fiscal 2028. And at that point, what I see reversing is, is what we're going to do is the golf course is going to start paying the general fund back. So that's going to be really, actually, from my perspective, real, a, a, a real win for the city.
Good, all right, thank you.
Councilmember Chamberlain?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Rob, Kyle, your whole team. I know this is hours, pound hours and hours of work, so thank you. Two questions. One is in the vein of Councilmember Brooks, but I want to just start with a basic question. TFAK is in proprietary funds, but now that this current fiscal year, we moved it out, we won't see it in a future act for, in under proprietary. Is that correct?
You, you're 100% right. Matter of fact, I can get you footnote 20 on page 70 of, of the big book here. It's a, it's called a subsequent event, and I'll just read it for you. Subsequent to year end, the Aquatic Center Fund will be closed, and all operations will be integrated into the general fund. The advance to the Aquatic Center Fund from the general fund will be eliminated. This will be reflected in the financial statements for the fiscal year ending June 30th of 2026. So, yes, you will not see the aquatic center. It's just going to be part of the general fund, and it'll fall somewhere within the recreation group, I believe, right? Is that what you did? Yeah.
Okay. Second question, this is also more on the educational side. So looking at page 20, it talks about these five different factors that are considered and impact our economic outlook. And I was talking to my husband over the dinner table last night. And so the question, and then I'll explain kind of why I'm asking, is just, so if you could speak to, you know, reminding, you know, all of us, our residents, that interplay between taxable value, when you see increases in taxable value, that interplay with, with heavily rollbacks? And I ask that because as I talk to my, you know, my husband, you know, he's saying, oh, well, you know, look at your taxable value. We see these big numbers. But I remember, you know, we talked about in our budget sessions, as you, as you have high taxable value, that triggers this heavily rollback, that therefore then it always hits capital, it hits the library millage, and then it just constrains us in being able to do things. So, meaning, it's that answer to residents of like, well, you know, taxable value, yes, it is increasing, but it creates also these other constraints. So I don't know, if you could just speak to that relationship and how those interplay?
Yeah, it, it was on the slide that Kyle talked to before, and this, and I got to give Kelly, Tim, our city assessor, the credit, because this was hers from last year. And really, what it talks about is, yeah, yeah, we, you know, people are like, hey, there's a housing boom, houses are so expensive. You, you see your house going up 8.2%, but then the reality is, by the time it gets down to property tax revenues, is only 6%, 5.9% in this case. So that's, that's a big deal. And then the other things that, if you're talking about, like, if I was doing a SWOT analysis and, you know, had some threats to the city, everyone during the government shutdown heard about healthcare going up, right? And what, what the cost of healthcare is. And I know every one of us lives that in our own lives. We haven't met with our consultant yet, Gallagher. We usually do that in December. And so when Kyle, myself, and Jeanette Menig, our HR director, when we talk about healthcare, that's going to be another thing that historically, we've had an increase in the budget for 7%. We have that rolled out each year. We're pretty sure it's going to be double digits or more this year. So that's going to erode some of our capability of returning, doing as well as we did this past year.
And when there's heavily rollbacks, Rob, it's always to capital, it is to the library, it can't touch the refuge and, and water, right?
Right, so, so, yeah, wa, water doesn't have a millage, so it's not going to be water. Those are the rates that we set. So refuse, because we aren't at the, at the top, we, we, we could actually charge more if we needed to, we don't, so that doesn't get affected by the heavily rollback. And you're right, we've chosen to take our capital and roll that back and not touch our operating at 6.5. So yes, capital's getting hit harder for the heavily rollback, but then you can see, like, in a year like this, we're bringing money, potentially $7 million back.
Thank you, Rob. And I'm just asking those questions because as I was having to play with my husband, he's like, well, why did no one ever explain that to him when it came to the bond? So just, again, it shows our challenges that we have as we communicate to the public around what's getting hit, capital, library, and why then, you know, we had a need to come with the bond. So, so thank you for entertaining me and just helping us to communicate it to the public.
Right, thank you.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Thank you. Yeah, just, for Councilmember Gunn, the, the golf courses are cash flow positive. In fact, since COVID, the amount of rounds have increased, they're even more cash flow positive than they were pre-COVID. It's just that bond from 2003 or something that we're still paying off, so.
That's right.
Which we refinanced to lower rates before all the rates went up. So those rates are extremely low. So the golf courses are actually a net asset. They, they bring in more than they, they take out besides that bond. So it's a good thing. To speak to Councilmember Chamberlain's point, our, I think I ran the numbers during the campaign that our inflation-adjusted revenue per resident over the last decade is down 3.5%. And that's because of inflation and because our population increased. So even though we've seen increases in net revenue due to new construction, we have more people, too. We have more demand, we have more economic growth, and people coming here for retail and everything, which puts more demand in our police and fire and everything. So as a net whole, it, it's actually 3.5% less, which is interesting to look at. So, yes, there's more, but there's more costs, too. That was just more of a comment.
Can I just say, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Mayor Proton Chanda?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, actually, on the, the slide you had before, my question was, I think, related to what Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga asked. This 6.7% increase in taxable value, and I think 5.9% is property tax. Do you have an idea about how much of it is new revenue, means new residents, versus how much of it is inflation?
I don't have that right at my fingertips. The only one that would be is Kelly. Do you have that out there, or no? Okay. We can get, we'll get that to you. We'll, we'll get that answer for you.
My guess is the new revenue is probably not a whole lot, because it's.
No, I, I can tell you it's between 1, 0 and 1.7, because 5% of that growth was.
Yeah, because that's one of the things we always hear, that you have construction everywhere. It seems that way, but it's in reality, you know, out of 35,000 homes that we have in Troy, I don't think we are adding a whole lot of new residential homes. But that would be a data that we probably good to have published at some point.
Right.
That every year, new construction is only bringing so much new. And as Councilmember Hamilton mentioned, we are also increasing cost. If, you know, 1,000 more residents come in, we probably need more police officers and more services, right?
Right, I'll get that for you.
Yeah, thank you, yes.
Absolutely.
Any other, any additional questions? Follow-up?
Councilmember Hamilton? Yeah, I, I know as we're going into the advance in January, and we talk about our long-term capital needs, I know me personally, I, I would like us to do a better job of telling that story to residents, of how, you know, these increases in revenue are being eaten up by costs, by inflation and by healthcare, as you mentioned, and by increased population. I, I think our, our budget documents, I mean, I'm a engineer budget nerd, so I dig into them very deeply, as always, but I, I'd like to tell that overwhelming, the overlying story of where our actual tax dollars are going, when you take out grants, when you take out all the other funds, where the actual 7.8 million of taxes that go into the capital fund and where the 45 million of the general fund are actually going, when you take all the other sources of revenue that hit each of the different things. And when you compare that to other communities, you can really see how we're really near the bottom on a lot of things, especially when it comes to non-public safety piece of it. So I feel like if we can do a better job of telling that story, it'll help inform residents. And we talked with the Citizens Academy residents, learning about, that they love the financial part of, piece of the, of what they learn, because they really learned in detail how the city works. And I think as, as the way our budgets are presented now, is just, it's a lot of stuff. It's good for nerds like me, but for residents that have a life and, and other things that they're actually doing, unlike me, I, I would like to be able to kind of explain where their tax dollars are going in a little more detail and simplicity.
Sounds good. Yeah, we can work on that. That sounds good.
Sure.
Yep.
Councilmember Gunn?
Follow-up question, and getting, going to the, we're going to be going to the planning in January, but is there some sort of analysis that you would have? We talked about the growth of the city, so there's new housing, there's new developments. What that additional cost per maybe resident or per dwelling comes on the city?
I, I think we can look into that and try and, try and come up with something for you.
Yes, I think that would understand the impact that we have on the, on the growth here.
Yep, absolutely.
It'll also encourage people to say, well, then stop building new houses. So keep that in mind. That information might not be exactly what we want to hear. Just, like, keep in mind, we, before we lay too much on you, it, there's, it creates the narrative both ways, so. Anything else? Thank you for your presentation, you and you, Alan, back there. Thank you. It's very, very informative, the reports and everything. Of course, all this stuff is online
Yep.
with the, for those that do have the time to go through. The residents, they want to take the time, but it's, it's, well, award-winning information, as always. Well, hopefully this year.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council.
Thank you.
That concludes certificates of recognition of special presentations this evening. We have no carryover items, so we move on to public hearings. We do have one this evening. E1 is the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG 2026 Funds. That'll be introduced by Kurt Bovenseep, our DPW Director, and also Courtney Flynn,
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tonight, I am here to speak about our Project Year 2026 CDBG application. And so this year, we will be applying for two projects, as we have in the past. The first is the Services Project, and that's for yard services. And the second is for the Public Facilities Project, and that will be for the Bowlin Park Inclusive Play Structure. This year, the application process has changed a little bit with the county. So in previous years, the city was informed how much funding they could expect from the program. This year, the county is not providing that information until the projects have been applied for. And so the application is due December 5th, and we are applying for about $25,000 for the yard services, which is what we received for this current project year, which is Project Year 2025. And the county did say we could expect about that same amount for Project Year 2026. But for the Public Facilities Project, they are taking them all in, so from all the communities they work with in Oakland County, and reviewing them, project by project, and then deciding how much they will be awarding to each community. It could be the maximum amount, so the city of Troy, we're applying for 1.98 million, or it could be for zero, and we will know that in the new year.
You have a question, right off the bat?
Yes.
So this, this change by the county, should have asked Commissioner Erickson-Galt when she was here, she knew, but, you know, so it could be zero. Do we have any other parameters or expectations on what communities are getting funding, or how they're, what, what's the word I'm looking for? But what they're using to, as.
Just to play.
What's the word?
Criteria.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, what, because that, we typically, as a city, don't do very well when we're trying to fight for funds from, at the county level, or even at the state level, because there's an expectation that we're doing better than maybe we are. Case in point, what we were just talking about. I, I, I guess I have concerns that the county may once again take this opportunity to provide the funds to other communities and not Troy. And I'm just curious if there's any information on that.
So it is a competitive application process, and the application is standard for all sub-recipient communities. But according to their presentation earlier this year, they were urged to change the funding structure to, they were urged to change it to invest in more viable, high impactful community development projects. And so there was a concern that some of the smaller communities weren't necessarily getting as much funding to have more impactful projects. So now that's why they're looking at it as a project base, as opposed to a community base or a population base.
Just a real quick add to that. One of the criteria is the project has to be ready to go. So I think we're going to score fairly well on the inclusive park. We've done the environmental, we've done everything required in the, the section 106. So we should score relatively high on that. I, I see the disappointment on this new process. I have talked to Commissioner Galt on this. The commissioners were not involved in this process. This was done in a vacuum with the community housing portion of the county. We have expressed our disappointment in this process. It is unfortunate that you have a community like Troy, who has, has these federal funds coming to us already, based on our population and, and, and our socioeconomic status within the, within our population. There are communities that are talking about how do they withdraw from being a sub-recipient from the county. Pontiac is an example of a community that is no longer, is a, no longer using the county. They're a direct recipients, and there's approximately four other communities within Oakland County that are direct recipients of this funding. of this funding. Um, I think that we're in a position to see how this goes. Um, if it does not go to where it's advantageous for our community, we may be coming back with a recommendation to be a direct recipient. Just off the top, the, the county takes all this money in from all the communities and takes thirty percent right off the top of everyone's funding to pay for their operation, um, which is a big, a really, really big number when you think about it. I will say that the county is, um, we're, we're a community that they want to please. We are the largest community in Oakland County. Um, we bring the most money to the county to be able to do this. So, um, I think we have a voice and we've expressed our, our concern with this new process.
Additional questions? Councilor Chamberlain?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just to clarify, of these two projects under, um, this funding, is the yard services protected or is that also potentially, um, uncertain?
They have said that for the public services, which for the city of Troy is the yard services program, that you can expect, um, about fifteen percent of what you had received previously. So for us, that's about twenty-five thousand. So when putting the information into the application, I've, I've been meeting with their staff pretty regularly because this application is new for me, but also new for everyone, the application process. And they said to expect about twenty-five thousand dollars. But I do know that that number has been cut in the last year or two, so it was previously about double.
Okay, okay. And you, another quick question. You may not have this handy, Courtney, but do you know how many residents benefit from that service?
Off the top of my head, it is about fifty.
Fifty. And what is the process for them to apply? Is there something on our website for people to learn if they qualify and what they need to do?
So you have to meet a certain income threshold, and then we open the application sometime, um, at the beginning of the new year. And then they have to provide certain documentation showing, again, their, um, their income and if they meet the threshold. And then we review them with how much money we also have received from CDBG for that project year, and also what our contract is charging us for the services, and then determine how many applicants we can take.
Is there a way that we could at some point, when that launches, have a link? Just because I get questions and, um, you know, I don't know if someone qualifies, but people have asked about it, um, if that's possible.
Yes, we are reviewing the application process for this year, just depending on the funding. So we can let you know how, um, what we determine and then let you know if there's an open application process.
Thank you.
And just to follow up on that, just to be clear, our CDBG funding may not be meeting our current expenditures with the current participants. So there may not be an opening in the next year unless council decides to use general fund dollars to supplement that, that service. Um, so there is a good chance right now, and, and the prediction is, is that we won't be taking applications because the current funding does not, um, meet the current expenses.
Understood.
If the current funding's half of what it was and expenses have gone up, it's, I can even do that now. So, Councilmember Hamilton?
Thank you, Mayor. This is more a question for city admin, because this is something I've thought about. I think, uh, years ago I even mentioned it. Um, could we expand that program with general fund dollars? I know, uh, at our last meeting, uh, to City Attorney Bloom, you mentioned how we are kind of restricted when it comes to charitable purposes. And so this is specifically from the CDBG. I think there's something, isn't it connected to the Troy Community Coalition Two, or Troy Community Found, one of those two, um, that they have something to do with it as well. So could we, in the next budget, expand that program? It's, it's something I would like to do if we could, and if a majority of council wants, or are we restricted on that and that's more of a CDBG thing?
This, it's really more of a CDBG, and it's a pass-through. Again, you can't, uh, provide charity to individuals. You have to, you have to be very judicious with tax dollars and make sure that they're spent on, um, things that the city should be, that's within the city's, um, mandate to perform. So that would be outside of the city's mandate.
Okay, wait a minute, sorry. I, I hate to do this now, but you said one thing, unless the general fund contributed dollars, and you said something different. For those watching and those sitting up here, like that, like that doesn't make sense to me. And I'm sorry to do it here, but I don't understand that. And I, 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 it doesn't make sense to me that we could, that we, it makes sense to me from the perspective of that, yes, we can't give charity, but we can't provide a service? Like, I, I, I guess, that's my confusion on that. Like, and maybe, maybe an additional reporting or some written answers would be better. But I'm, we got two conflicting kind of statements there. And maybe there was a miscommunication on that, but I just wanna, don't want to leave that hanging.
Um, and City Manager and I were, were just talking about this, and we were a little concerned that, that it was brought up. Um, but, um, I'm happy to do a report. But again, you, you have to be very judicious with tax dollars. And there, you cannot benefit private citizens. That is one of the constitutional, um, uh, restrictions that you're gonna be dealing with. So I'm happy to do a report to further delve into that, um, as far as, you know, whether there are other funding opportunities that, that might be something that's available. But again, it's gonna probably be pass-through opportunities.
Yeah, I guess what I'm curious on is, do other communities provide this kind of service? I'm not familiar if they do, if it's other than CDBG. And I know a lot of other communities proportionally get a lot more CDBG funding than we do, because there's a lot of, the federal funds, there's a lot of factors, like how much poverty is in your community and everything. And we're naturally lower than a lot of other communities. And that affected how, how much we got for the, I think it was, was it the CARES Act or the one act where we got the?
It was ARPA.
The ARPA, yeah. Uh, that used the same formula. So you'd see communities like Royal Oak get double or triple what we, yeah, yeah. So, um, maybe there's other communities that have more elaborate programs just because they have more CDB dollars per resident. But I am curious to see if that's an option. And I, I've talked, in that campaign trail, I talked with residents about this specifically. But, I mean, if we legally can, we legally can. But I'm curious what our options are. I think there's a consensus on council, just to look into that. Because I love that. I think that's a great program.
Recognizing there is a separate slope to adding, I mean, and...
No, I understand.
I'm not saying that we should, I, I'm interested in hearing why we can or cannot.
Exactly.
But, yeah. Councilmember Chamberlain?
And just a quick follow-up, you know, just to have the history of when did we start, um, doing this? Like, how long? Like, where's it come from? Again, other communities. And I recognize that if you don't have more money, you can't take out more people. But I presume there's some weightless, maybe, you know, some seniors pass. Like, how does, how does that all work? So it'd just be helpful to know.
Mayor, if I may, my, my apologies for oversimplifying that, that statement and, and the, and the confusion. The, I, that was purely based on what I'm familiar with, what other communities do. So how they got there or whether it is even allowable, my, my apologies for oversimplifying, um, and making that statement if it, it does cause some confusion.
Any other questions at this point? Councilor Mayor Protem Chanda?
Um, I think probably mentioned, but what kind of service do you provide with that? I mean, is that something we are restricted to? It's, I understand snow removal or lawn mowing type thing. Is there a definition of what we provide?
So for the yard services, we provide lawn cutting services in the summer and fall, and then a fall cleanup, which will be starting, I believe, this week or next week. And then, uh, snow services, so where your driveway is cleared out by our contractor. Um, when it snows, I don't remember the threshold off the top of my head, but I want to say like two inches maybe.
And then the other one that Kurt, you were talking about was for the Bullen Park. That is on like phase three, phase four of the project, right? I mean, potentially. Because we think we are funded up to phase two of that project.
So with the, with the additional contribution of Oakland County Parks, the two hundred fifty thousand dollars that was accepted about a couple of months ago, um, we went back to the design team, um, to be able to look at, okay, because that kind of actually put a little bit of a hiccup into our phasing.
Okay.
Uh, because we were only expecting about a hundred twenty-five thousand each year. Um, so what we've decided to do is, not knowing how the county's gonna respond to these projects, is we decided to put the remaining phases in there, the total, to, to complete the project in our application. Um, I don't know if the county will come back to us and ask us if there's a way to phase this project out if it, if, if we weren't awarded the entire amount. Um, it is, I am unsure how they're going to do this. But we would be well-prepared if they came back and said, would you accept a lower amount and what could you accomplish with that?
Right, yeah.
We still have the phases built in there, um, but we decided to put in for the full project amount.
And this is on top of, I thought we were also getting something from them, from their, um, you know, the point-three mileage that they passed, um, the Parks and Recreation mileage for the county. That is a separate thing. This is the federal grant, correct?
That is correct. That is separate from CDBG, yes.
Okay. So that, we could potentially be getting something from that for the same purpose, if we choose to.
So the, the, where the funding is coming currently for the project, we have about seven hundred, or excuse me, about six hundred and eighty thousand dollars of CDBG funds that was purchased, the first play structure and some safety surfacing. The two hundred fifty thousand dollars is being used to fence that area in and put the pathways and prepare for future phases. Um, but two separate funds, if, I, I hope that answers your question.
Right. Now, I was wondering, can we get more from that point-three mileage next year?
We're always trying to get more, yes.
Okay, so, really great. You are really, okay. Thanks.
All right. Any other questions? All right, I'm gonna open the public hearing for E-one. I don't see that anybody has signed up to speak on E-one, but that doesn't prohibit you from speaking at this time. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and ask if someone would like to move the resolution. Councilmember Chamberlain?
Um, thank you, Mayor. I'll move E-one, Community Development Block Grant, CDBG twenty-twenty-six funds as printed in the agenda packet.
Support. Uh, moved by Councilmember Chamberlain, supported by Councilmember Gunn, that we approve E-one, Community Development Block Grant, CDBG twenty-twenty-six funds as printed in the agenda packet. Discussion. I'm deeply disappointed with Oakland County for changing the process, for cutting funds. And if there's anything we can do as a body to help, well, if there's consensus to show that kind of disappointment without cutting off our noses despite our faces, I'd be willing to consider something along those lines. I, I understand, I knew they'd made some changes. I guess it's the first time it's come before us with the specifics of what it's doing. On the flip side, if the all-inclusive park gets funded at the highest level, we'll be singing their praises. So I understand the, the irony there, but it's concerning to me that they seemingly have added more subjectivity in an effort to make it more fair. I don't think it's going to play out that way, based on what I've seen in previous, um, things, funding issues with the county at the county level. And I'm concerned about the reduced funding for the, um, yard services and snow. I, I think that that's a service that, as we have an aging population here in the city of Troy, and there is an, you know, obviously there are financial thresholds, but it seems to me there's gonna be more of a need rather than less. Um, and hearing the thirty percent they take off the top for, if those numbers are accurate, take, that they take off the top for administration, um, I would be interested at some point in seeing what it would look like to potentially do it, not as, not through Oakland County, but as a standalone. But, um, we'll cross that bridge when we get there and maybe have some hope now in the meantime. But, any other discussion? All right, the vote, Ms. Dixon?
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Bloom?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Councilmember Chamberlain?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Chanda?
Yes.
Councilmember Gunn?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes. Motion carries. That concludes public hearings. Next up is public comment for items on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. I don't see that anybody has signed up, uh, for public comment F, so no need for reply. We have no postponed items, so move on to regular business. I-one is board and committee appointments. There are no mayoral appointments and no city council appointments this evening. I-two is board and committee nominations. I have no mayoral nominations and there are no city council nominations this evening. This takes us to, getting used to this new system, City Clerk Dixon.
Sorry.
The, uh, request for closed session, I-three. Uh, I will move, um, I-three, I've lost it. There we are. Be resolved, the Troy City Council shall meet in closed session as permitted by MCL fifteen point two-six-eight E, Troy versus Den Ha. Support. Moved by the Chair, supported by Councilmember Hamilton, that we approve I-three request for closed session as, uh, read into the record and printed in the agenda packet. Any discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Bloom?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Councilmember Chamberlain?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Chanda?
Yes.
Councilmember Gunn?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes. Motion carries. At the conclusion of our public meeting here, we'll recess and pick up in closed session in the boardroom where I expect that we will adjourn for the evening in there. Next up is I-four, adoption of the proposed twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six city council rules of procedure. That'll be introduced by our City Clerk, Caitlin Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, the rules that you have before you are, uh, just one simple change. It's just to update the rotation for the mayor pro tem choice. Um, there are no other changes that were requested by council or proposed by city administration. Um, so I can answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you. Any questions for City Clerk Dixon? Someone like to move the resolution? Everyone's scrolling on their screens because of the change. Uh, Mayor Protem Chanda?
I move item I-four, adoption of proposed twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six city council rules and procedures as printed on the agenda packet.
Support.
Moved by Mayor Protem Chanda, supported by Councilmember Chan, uh, Chamberlain, that we approve I-four, adoption of the proposed twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six city council rules of procedure as printed in the agenda packet. Any discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Councilmember Chamberlain?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Chanda?
Yes.
Councilmember Gunn?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Bloom?
Yes.
Motion carries. Uh, that concludes regular business this evening. Next up is the consent agenda. Would anyone like to pull an item from the consent agenda for further discussion? Councilmember Hamilton?
Like to move all items on, on the consent agenda as printed in the agenda packet.
Support.
Moved by Councilmember Hamilton, supported by Councilmember Brooks, that we approve all items on the consent agenda as printed in the agenda packet. Any discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Chamberlain?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Chanda?
Yes.
Councilmember Gunn?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Bloom?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Motion carries. If you're here for an item on the consent agenda, all have been approved. Next up, memorandums and future council agenda items. I do have one K-one, announcement of a public hearing. The announcement of public hearing for December first, twenty-twenty-five, conditional rezoning, JPCR twenty-twenty-five dash zero zero one, proposed Village of Hastings, east side of Livernoy, north of Square, Lake, P-I-N eighty-eight dash twenty dash zero three dash three zero one dash eight eight zero eight eight, uh, dash zero two three dash zero two four dash zero two five, and eighty-eight dash twenty dash zero three dash three five one dash zero zero four, section three, from NN Neighborhood Node Q and R-one B, one-family residential zoning districts, to RT, one-family attached zoning district. Uh, that'll be at our next meeting on December first. Uh, so next up is public comment for items not on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. For, we have a handful of people signed up this evening. For our council rules of procedure, you're given three minutes to speak, uh, from the podium. You're speaking to us, um, as a body. Uh, it's not a back and forth conversation. We will have the opportunity to reply and respond if we would like. Um, you have, again, three minutes, a timer in front of you. We'll be showing you the time. When the light turns yellow, that's a one-minute warning. When it turns red, that means your time is up. Um, so with that said, I'll call on Mary Ellen Barden.
Sign in sheet.
You signed in on the...
Oh, that's right, okay, sorry. Uh, good evening. My name is Mary Ellen Barden, and I thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I want to begin by saying that I truly appreciate the work you all do. Unfortunately, three minutes usually only allows me enough time to complain as opposed to compliment all the good things I love about Troy. Um, on my wish list, there would be ways for residents to have real conversations with you. Perhaps a format where you, we submit a question and the city responds and record a discussion, post it on Troy website or YouTube. Um, I know there is a lot that goes on into your decisions, and having more transparency would help residents better understand how you arrive at them. Tonight, it was difficult to know how to spend my three minutes, library or zoning. Councilmember Gunn noted on next door that you need to hear from residents. And the immense, immediate response from another resident was that we don't want more high-density projects. Zoning feels more urgent because of how many projects are happening right now. Many asking for, many of them are asking for rezoning or waivers. At a recent meeting, it was stated that Troy is at ninety-eight percent build-out, yet we see bulldozers everywhere. It's heartbreaking to watch so much nature being cleared. It makes me, many wonder, many of us wonder about the true price of progress and when that price becomes too high. I emailed concerns about two of the recent planning commission projects, but didn't receive a response, and the planning commission has approved both. The first was the Troy Trail North project, which is asking for rezoning in order to double the density, allowing, allowed on the current zoning. At the meeting, the developers stated that they couldn't build smaller, single-family, affordable homes because it didn't meet their financial needs. Yet they brought the land aware of what the current zoning was, and now they're trying to change it. I don't see that why Troy should accommodate a density increase simply because it's more profitable for the developer. And further frustrating, furthering my frustration was the framing of the transfer of wetlands to the city of Troy with ongoing drainage challenges. As a member of the community on the east side that project brought up, um, they're framing it as a gift because they're putting a park there, but the reality is there is ongoing drainage challenges, and there's wetland considerations. And to me, that's gonna be a big city expense to maintain that. It's not a gift, it's a, it's just another expense. Um, the second project is some set... The second project is Somerset Retail Project, which is asking for waivers because their general site plan, still incomplete while they seek tenants, doesn't comply with zoning ordinances. I do not agree with closing in on the Big Beaver Corridor by allowing buildings to close on, so close to the roads. And I strongly believe that it, if a plan doesn't fit zoning, it should be redesigned, not granted waivers. There's a beautiful rendering of the original Big Beaver vision, and what we are seeing built does not reflect that vision at all. I truly hope the city can find its way back to a more balanced development plan, one that respects existing zoning, protections of our green spaces and preservation, the character of the city, so many of us chose to call home. This is the Big Beaver Corridor, and it does not look like that anymore.
Thank you. Next up is Ken Brzezinski.
My name is Ken Brzezinski, former candidate for Troy City Council, and I'm up here to express my thanks and gratitude, first of all, to incumbents Rebecca Chamberlain and David Hamilton, and to newly elected councilmember Annalisa Bloom. I know that you will serve our community well, and I am proud to be up here to give my thanks. But I'd also like to thank the clerk's office, to Aileen and Cheryl, and all the staff and the precinct workers that made that election happen, and to the voters of Troy who exercised their constitutional rights. And I'm happy to report, well, we had over 30% turnout, if I'm not mistaken, and to the 4,100-plus people who believed in me to sit on council, I'm just a person with a disability, but I'm honored to be able to potentially serve up here. So I'm humbled and grateful to have had this opportunity. And lastly, I'd like to thank Ellen Hoderek for her 12 years of continuing service to the community. I know last week, everybody was able to express their appreciation of her. She was here earlier, and I was glad that I was able to be here and thank her in person. So, thank you all, and continue to serve our community, and I know you will.
Thanks, Ken. Next up is Alex Darrow.
You may recall that you renewed your contract with Flock Safety for the use of their automated license plate readers in August to the tune of $347,500. The quantity of technical information about these cameras that has come to light even in the last six months takes the active usage of these cameras from a mere privacy concern to an unmitigated civil rights and data security disaster. Just starting with the basics, these cameras require no warrant for near-real-time access, save all data collected to an alleged buffer of 30 days handily qualifying for the definition of dragnet surveillance, have absolutely no oversight, private, state, federal, or otherwise to their use, and are exempt from FOIA requests, making any of the claims on the Troy Flock Transparency Portal impossible to verify. With such an arrangement, it shouldn't be surprising that numerous other communities in the country have found their cameras to be routinely abused by those with access. Between 2013 and 2015, the AP found more than 40 instances of police mixed conduct in database access just in Michigan and over 600 nationwide. On the technical side, these devices use outdated and insecure software that is beyond unacceptable for a system with this level of tailored access. Just to give you a flavor of the level of inadequacy at play here, the cameras run a version of Android that was discontinued in 2021, and since then, over 900 published vulnerabilities have been found that potentially affect every Flock service device in service today. Anyone with $5 worth of hardware off Amazon in less than 60 seconds of time with physical access to any ALPR you currently have serviced in Troy today can gain persistent wireless kernel-level access to the device and its video stream, allowing them to have complete control over the device, even to edit the video stream's contents in real time, such that it is impossible for the camera licensee or even manufacturer to determine by whom or even if the device has been compromised. The only way to revert such a hack is to physically decommission the device and destroy it. The database these cameras feed into does not require 2FA for access, and only a month before you renewed your contract, Flock Safety exposed a misconfigured demo site that leaked parts of their source code and allowed anyone who visited the website administrator access to their oversight services. The Flock Corporation also does not follow ethical, responsible disclosure practices, instead relying on NDAs and harassment to protect their reputation and avoid fixing their broken products. To top it off, no independent study has ever been published that shows these cameras have any statistically significant effect on crime or police case-clearing rates. Your renewal letter proudly proclaims that these cameras have assisted in clearing 110 different cases, but as the San Diego Trust Foundation found in March of this year, Flock Safety has been caught furnishing other states with manipulated or false data to secure contract renewals in the past. So unless a table with specifics exists, you'll have to forgive me for writing off this claim completely as corporate propaganda. It's disappointing to be asked to pay additional taxes in the city and then see the existing budget being squandered on leasing mass surveillance cameras that are...
Thank you, Mr. Darrow, that's your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next up is Walter Cook.
Good evening, my name is Walter Cook, and I'm a Troy resident. I come here to thank the council and city for two things. First, last week, two colleagues and I spoke at public comment on behalf of a small, local nonprofit that we enthusiastically volunteer for, Troy Youth Assistance. Although it wasn't the outcome we hoped for, we appreciate the thoughtful discussion in the city council meeting. Specifically, we appreciate both the interest and support for our mission, as well as the constraints under which the city operates. We felt heard and respected, and that has not always been my experience when interfacing with city councils and other places where we have lived. So thank you for taking the time to fully consider our request for additional resources. I'd also especially like to thank former councilmember Ellen Hoderek for lifting the item off the consent agenda. As someone who has watched city council meetings for over the past year or two on YouTube, I recognize that taking an item off the consent agenda for further discussion is a rare event. There was a lot of discussion last week acknowledging and thanking her for her leadership, and I want to thank, echo that sentiment. I've now had two interactions with Ellen over the years, and both times I appreciate the care and thought she put into the issues that I brought before her, especially TYA last week. I also want to thank all the council members who either personally contributed to TYA and/or offered to leverage their networks to help TYA fundraise. Your support is deeply appreciated. The second thing that brings me to speaking tonight is the Troy Community Academy. As you heard earlier tonight, it was an awesome, highly informative experience. I want to thank Communications Director Courtney Flynn and Senior Management Analyst Dylan Clark for facilitating and organizing all those sessions. And I'm grateful to all the city staff who gave up their time to present on all those Wednesday evenings. I know I speak for all my fellow participants, that we value, greatly value their expertise and time, and are deeply appreciative. So that's all I have, no complaints or requests for money tonight, but rather just some expressions of gratitude. You all make Troy such a wonderful place to live and raise our daughter. Thank you for our time, for your time.
That concludes those that have signed up for public comment for items not on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. Now is an opportunity for city council or administration to respond.
I just wanted to say thank you to Walter for bringing up the Community Academy again. I just graduated from it, and I know there are other alumni here on council. I encourage everybody who is in the audience or listening or considering that when it does come up for enrollment, it is a great program that really explores how the city is run, and I appreciate that you gave gratitude to the city council staff and/or the city administrative staff who put it on because it is extremely well-done. So thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you, Councilmember Bloom. Councilmember Hamilton?
Just speak to Ms. Barden on zoning. Do we know when the zoning ordinance amendments are going to come before city council? Say that to city admin.
City Attorney Bloom?
Yep. Do you know when the zoning ordinance amendments are going to come before council? I know there's, on Planning Commission, they've had discussions on the nodes updates, but I'm curious where they are and that. I know it's been a while since our master plan update, so I know it's coming to us soon, but do we have a timeline?
Yeah, two things. Firstly, first of all, yes, Ms. Barden did comment on two specific projects, but those will actually be coming to you. You are the final authority on those. So I just wanted to make sure that that was, that was clear. As far as the amendments, they are still working on them. They know that it is a priority of this council, it's their priority as well. So I'm hoping that you will see them very quickly.
Okay. I have to follow up to that. The Somerset Retail, that's coming to us? Wasn't that just like plan approval?
Again, I know that the, that the north, you know, across the way on Livernoy, I know that that certainly is coming to you.
That, fair, okay. Sorry, just wanted to clarify that. Councilmember Chamberlain?
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Barden, I just wanted to say, earlier this summer, I did stop by at your house because I go by at, when I was at Beechwood, I mean, gosh, almost every day or so, and you happened not to be home, just in regards to accessibility and conversation. But I do hope, again, maybe we could plan at some point, but would love to stop by, be accessible, and to know that you can always reach out to us. So, just to say, I did, that was after the Kmart, our decision, as I, you know, wanted to stop by.
I get that impression, and I know I'm not supposed to talk, but I appreciate.
So, we'll take the, we actually just, she says she appreciates it, I'll leave it at that, but thank you.
The last thing is, Mr. Cook, thank you for your message. Just to follow up is, I'm gathering a group of moms this Friday, and I'm going to put in a pitch to donate to TYA, my own foundation. They are in the system for matching gifts, so I do hope to support as well. So thank you for speaking out.
Any other response? I hear where you're, where you're at, Mary Ellen. I know your emails have come through, I've seen them, and I'll get back with you on a couple of those things. I know I'm absorbing. She writes long emails, too. They're very, so, there's a lot going on. But I hear your concerns, and I understand, I understand where you're coming from. And I think there's a lot of residents in Troy who have similar questions, and there's, we've got to do a better job of communicating some of the issues that relate to that and working with other residents on that respect. Mr. Brzezinski, thank you for coming forward with class and sharing your gratitude, and I enjoyed getting to know you throughout the summer and in your quest for a role up here. And as I said earlier, I hope you'll consider serving on some other, in some other capacity in the meantime, so we'll find that right fit. Mr. Cook, you're the kindest person who's ever been rejected for anything that's come before council. And I, between your emails and your comments tonight, and the Community Academy, and nice shirt, by the way, thank you for the work you're doing for TYA, of course, but also the demeanor you're doing it with. I just want to say thank you for that. And Mr. Darrow, I will take your comments under consideration, look into them further from my perspective. I appreciate you coming forward and taking the time. Appreciate anyone willing to come to city council and share their opinions and thoughts. So, that said, we'll move on to, we have no council referrals this evening. Would anyone have any comments on the reports? I will say O2A is very important. It's our Chapter 4 today, elected and appointed officials' ethics ordinance for city council review. We all signed this evening prior to the start of our council meeting that we, that we've reviewed that ethics ordinance, as we're required to do annually by the terms of the ordinance, and we've signed off on that. And you'll find it in the next agenda, you'll find it on the front page or a couple pages in with a new signature.
Yes, signature.
And Councilmember Bloom, so, that's on here, acknowledging that we've read that. Any other comments on the reports? Councilmember Chamberlain?
I'll just reference that. O2A is, part of that was, we'd intended to do some kind of joint training, and I think one of my, I don't know, maybe my second, third year on council, we did do that. And now that we're a new council, maybe there's a chance to revisit, remind everyone, what is a council manager formal government? We are decision-makers, we are policy setters, we're fiduciaries, we're not the managers, we're not the administrators. So maybe there's an opportunity to find some form of training. We talked about implicit bias in the past as well, I think that is always good to visit. So just want to put those out there again.
Thank you. Well, I'll probably, maybe we'll, we had city council school, as we called it, we've hit on the best, but there's, it is a always, there's some good reminders that comes out of some of those trainings, and perhaps we can look at a way to address that in the new year, if possible. So I'll turn that over to city manager and staff, see to look at that. Thank you.
Yeah, we've had some discussions, and we'll look into it. We're concentrating right now on the advance and then...
Right, right. Makes sense. Thank you. Any other comments on the reports? All right, council comments. I'm going to start, which I don't usually do, but I want to say congratulations to our two incumbents who got sworn back in tonight, Councilmember Hamilton and Councilmember Chamberlain. Thank you for willing to serve again and for being here, and it was nice to see family and friends here supporting the two of you. So congratulations and welcome back to the table. And also to Councilmember Annalisa Bloom, welcome to here, I, welcome to here. My English is great tonight. Welcome to the council table, but congratulations to you as well. And again, seeing family and friends and supporters here, it's a, we talked a little bit about how it is different when you sit up here versus out there, but I just wanted to give you an opportunity, if you wanted to say anything, I'll put you on the spot right now, but, you know, I, I looked back in councils past, they used to let the new people sworn in speak right after they were sworn in, and, which to me doesn't make sense with the agenda, but I, then I realized, like, we should probably give that opportunity. And without warning you, I'm going to give it to you, and of course, you too, if council comments can say anything you like as well, but...
Well, at first, I want to extend tremendous gratitude, I think also to Ken and to others who, throughout the course of the race, really showed how much they care about Troy. It was an absolute honor to be part of that process, and while reflected, I think, by our city in terms of how the election was run and with dignity and class, I think, from everyone. So it's, says a lot about our community when that's how we uphold our elections and how we conduct ourselves, you know, even, even when it works out or doesn't, that we have this kind of decorum and class. And so I think that that's part of the reason why I ran in the first place, which is because Troy is a really special community. To see the type of engagement like we have here at most council meetings, where people take time to share what they're concerned about, even if they know it may or may not be a popular position, I think also expresses how this council conducts itself with individuals, and I'm really, really honored to be a part of that now and hope to uphold not only what Ellen set forth, but what the rest of this council does, which is, we're here for our neighbors, for our family, and for our friends. And so I really hope to continue that, but also know that that's something that I'll continue to focus on. But it is, it is an extreme honor and one, and a responsibility I do not take lightly to help shepherd Troy over the next four years. So I just want to say thank you. I'm truly, truly honored, and I hope to learn from each and every one of you on council as to how to do this role and to do it with such grace and finesse as currently expressed. So I appreciate that you've all sat down with me, not just council, but also members of, of the city staff, to help me learn more about what this role entails so that I could approach it with as much knowledge and background as I possibly could. But you are absolutely right, running for this and being in this chair are very different, and I, I hope to get up to speed as quickly as possible. So thank you.
Thank you, and welcome. We all, we all say welcome, we all mean it, so. Councilmember Hamilton?
Yeah, I'm, again, deeply honored by Troy residents to choose me to represent you. I always remember that, that we work for the residents, the residents are my boss, and that's always where I look to in what I try to do in my eight years of service, before in my four future years of service that you've given to me, and I take that to heart. Congratulations to top vote getter Rebecca Chamberlain, and welcome to Annalisa Bloom, too. You're gonna, you have big shoes to fill. It's very weird, every single member of council here has never been at a full council meeting without Ellen sitting here, being in this room. But Annalisa, you're, I think, the right person to step in to fill that, and I'm honored to have you here. We've got a lot on our plate, we've got our capital needs, we've got our public safety needs. We'll have those conversations in the months to come, and, you know, I, I do agree, the election, it was, it was hard, it was a lot of good, healthy debate, I felt, and with the bond, too. And I feel, I feel our city's in a good place, and I look forward to the next four years.
Councilmember Chamberlain?
Thank you. So I actually said, what you just shared, at the doors, David, I often would say to residents, you are the boss. You are the boss. You are the boss. It's in our budget, like, residents are at the top. And as I was there, I've said all along, this campaign, first and foremost, it was about listening. And given that we had a bond, that was so essential that at the doors, as we knocked and canvassed, that we were listening, listening to what residents had to say. And so I did say that. You're the boss, and if this is something that's not right, I want to hear. I want, regardless of how you vote, or even if you don't vote for me, I want to know what you're looking for, what you want to see, so we can get it right. We can make this right. So those conversations, that listening, it was everything to me. And so I am so deeply honored to be reelected to my second full term on council, to continue serving. Mary Ellen, to be able to stop by your house and grab you. We'll have a chance to catch up. I'm sure we will at some point, and talk about all those issues, because those are really important issues, the future of our development. And I'm just confident that even though the bond did not pass, with David and I still being reelected, it gives me a sense of hope that the residents still believe we're a great team, that they still believe we're a great team, that they want David and I with this wonderful team that we have together, and Annalisa, congratulations, with you here, that we can work it out. We're going to figure it out. We're going to make it happen. So I believe in that very much to keep Troy even safer, stronger, and more financially secure. So as I've said, you know, our financial needs, those capital needs, they're not going away. And so one of the things I've shared a little bit, I talked right after the election with City Manager Nastasi, had a few conversations here and there, but I really believe deeply, next time around, we need to start with the community engagement. And I know, I raised my hand so many times as we talked about the bond, and I know the response is, we didn't have time. We didn't have time. And I know because of the needs, we were so anxious to try it, and we needed to. You know, that's part of community engagement, by putting the bond out there. Going forward, I probably will be more vocal, vocal in also distinguishing between communication and community engagement. So I've been blessed to actually work in both those fields. Community engagement is actually quite different than communication. Community engagement requires communication, but they're very, very different. Community engagement is more about co-creation, and it's involving residents in a different way than communication. My work at the World Bank, I was blessed, being a social development specialist and anthropologist, to be able to dedicate time to doing that on infrastructure projects. So I'm going to be more vocal in speaking about those things and wanting to have a plan that whatever time we need to get that right, to engage the public, is essential to me. We can talk at the advance, but, you know, we did see an email from another candidate, and again, Ken, thank you. Thank you for running. I thank all the candidates who ran, and even tonight were submitting, you know, their ideas of how they'd love to move things forward. I'd love to see some kind of task force or, actually, something like the FIT Team. So Troy used to have something called the FIT Team, Financial Ideas Team. I was a member of it as soon as I moved to Troy. You know, I volunteered for committees and found my way on that committee, and it was taking leaders and community members, both with financial expertise and just, you know, folks who are, like myself, engaged, you know, with moms and in the community, but people who can take, you know. The idea was, they were being exposed to the budgeting process. They were seeing slides and information that we were seeing in our study sessions, and it was a way for both these influencers to be educated and then share the knowledge, but also to give input. So I don't know what it is going forward. We'll decide as a council. This is a group project, as Ellen reminded us. But I, you know, I do hope at the advance, we talk about the financials, but then we talk about the how, the community engagement, the co-creation, the bringing our residents into this, because the number one thing at the doors, I heard this from really smart residents, was this hit them out of nowhere. We were studying this for years and years, but I heard really brilliant residents just... This is surprising to me. Where did this come from? And they felt they were, and they were out talking to their friends on golf, and none of them, you know, had an idea of where this came from, which means, again, there's not just the communication, there's a community engagement element that we need to think very strategically about. So I hope we can talk also about the community engagement portion at the advance in moving this forward, because that's how I believe we're going to lock arms as a council and with residents. That's how we're going to build Troy's today and Troy's tomorrow together.
Thank you, Councilmember Chamberlain.
Mayor, can I mention one more? I forgot, really important thing to mention.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Thank you to Clerk Dixon. I forgot to mention, this is my top point. Thank you to Clerk Dixon and all your team and all the poll workers that made this election run so smoothly. This was one of the highest turnout local elections we've ever had. We had twelve thousand five hundred absentees, seven thousand plus at the polls, and then seven hundred in the early voting, and I never heard of any of that going anything but smooth. I know standing out at the polls, I saw so many people come in, and you guys, as always, did an amazing job for a very high turnout local election. Thank you so much for everything you do.
Thank you. Mayor Portemchevanda.
I just wanted to join Mayor to congratulate David Hamilton and Rebecca Chamberlain for getting reelected. I know you guys for a long time, so tried to make the right decision. Look forward to working for at least two more years with you. And then, newly-elected Annalisa Bloom, welcome to the council. I didn't know you as much, but I had the chance to interact with you over the course of last few months. You know, you impressed me with your love and dedication for the city, as well as the depth of your understanding about the challenges that we face and the opportunities we have. So I think you have a big shoe to fill. I mean, you're going to be the new Ellen, younger. But I think you are probably the right person, and I also am happy that I can officially hand over the title of the newest member of the council to you.
Thanks.
And also, Ken, I mean, especially those who ran and came short, I mean, I'm really happy to see you are back here in the testament to your character and how much you care about Troy. So, you know, and all those who spoke, I mean, different people spoke about different things, but it is really an honor to represent a city where residents do care, and they care about from different angles, yes. I mean, residents, you know, the high density versus affordability, maybe there are different ways you can argue things, but the fact that you care, you come here week after week, it is a testament to, you know. And also, Alex, you know, I think we hear you, we'll try to understand where you're coming from and what it means. And Mr. Cook, I mean, I think you are, you know, I had email conversation with you. I think I really am impressed with the level you care and how passionate you are about a problem that we typically don't think about in Troy, but does exist, and I have communicated to a lot of people between last week and this week, and they are also actually surprised to hear that food insecurity is a problem in Troy, which we don't believe. It's one thing I noticed when I was running, you know, we are a diverse city, both in terms of ethnic and religious diversity, but also in terms of socioeconomic diversity. We have, you know, homes that are really huge, and then we have people who are potentially, you know, facing challenges of food insecurity. So these are the things that we learn when you come here and advocate for funding. Unfortunately, we could not do that as a city, but we'll try your citizens as much as we can to make sure that your needs are met. So again, thanks and welcome back, and welcome, Annalisa. That's about it.
Thanks, Mayor Portemchevanda. Councilmember Bregan.
Also, to piggyback on everything, welcome back, Dave and Rebecca, and welcome, Annalisa. Looking forward to working with you guys to solve the city problems, although I did talk with Rock and Theresa, and we're both thankful we were not in this campaign. I also, Mr. Cook, look forward to speaking with you on Wednesday and let's see if we can get some funding going to you. Love to sit down and talk with you about our zoning. And on the cameras, I mean, I got to believe, and I'm speaking without knowledge of this, but we've seen other, we've seen the fire chief come before us, we've seen the chief of police come before us for different technical things that are upgraded. I got to believe, there's got to be some system that they are constantly working to improve the system. You know, I mean, technology doesn't just sit flat, you know? I mean, I guess we'll see. Better people who have knowledge of this will check it out, but I look forward to, you know, as Mayor Baker said, the study of this and see where we can go with it. There was a serious event in Troy. There was a robbery, and the police department, always on top of it, and thankful you guys caught this guy really quick. That was very appreciative. I mean, that just shows you, though, I mean, our Troy police is top-notch, so thank you for that. Also want to mention, you know, we're coming into the holidays, December, you know, Historical Village has a lot of events coming up, so I encourage everybody to check those out. But we also know Thanksgiving's coming up, and as a Native American, I feel I'm uniquely qualified, as my ancestors were at that first Thanksgiving, right? But let's just say, if there was a Yelp review, I know it'd be pretty mixed. But in today's world, Thanksgiving has grown into something bigger. It's time to be grateful, gather with family, pretend we all enjoy cranberry sauce from a can. This year, as you sit down with your loved ones, remember gratitude, remember community, and please remember not to start any political debates at the dinner table. The turkey's suffered enough. Wishing everyone a safe and joyful and meaningful Thanksgiving, however you celebrate, and thank you all for your participation, your devotion to the city. I'm honored to be a part of this team.
Thank you, Councilmember Bregan.
Oh, gosh. I guess I have to say something.
You have to have to. It's too mean. Welcome and congratulations.
Basically, congratulations again. I kind of said it at the last meeting, but congratulations again, Councilmember Hamilton, Chamberlain, and Bloom. We're happy to have you guys back and new council member. And I guess happy Thanksgiving to everybody. Just be safe. I know that the holidays, it is a wonderful time to spend with family, but it can be, you know, bittersweet for some people. So just keep people in mind that, you know, for some people, this may be their first holiday without a loved one, or maybe there's a lot of changes going on. People have lost jobs. There's a lot of things going on in this world, and so just kind of keep others in mind and check in on your friends and relatives and make sure people are doing well and stay safe.
Good follow-up. Councilmember Bregan has a follow-up.
I wanted to also thank Ken. You've come to all these meetings. You've spoken well. You've worked hard, and I really appreciate the effort. I also had a chance to sit down with you and get to know you, and I think you really, you gave it what you had, and I appreciate it. I know it's not easy.
Thank you. Here, we thought without Ellen, these meetings would be shorter. Sorry, everybody. Sorry, city staff, I guess is what I really mean by that. But no, before everyone says happy Thanksgiving, we all, I can speak for all of us, we wish this entire city of Troy a happy Thanksgiving. Usually, our meeting is Thanksgiving week, so this is different for us this year. But on that note, and Councilmember Brooks touched on it a little bit, Councilmember Abraham used to talk a lot about the, you know, drunk driving is a huge thing at Thanksgiving time. I see our chief of police nodding his head, which means they're out there watching, and keep that in mind. But please, if you've had too much to drink, it's so easy to get an Uber. It's so easy to do a lot of things today that didn't exist back in the day. Don't put your life or someone else's life at risk, recognizing that with family get-togethers, there are a lot of feelings, and people do tend to do things differently this time. So just be careful out there, and it's... I hate, I hate reading about the terrible accidents or the terrible things that happen around Thanksgiving, and really from Thanksgiving through the new year. So please be safe, I guess, is my main point on that. And I... We've said all the congratulations and all the welcomes, and I'm glad you brought up the FIT Team, Councilmember Chamberlain. I actually brought that up to City Manager Nastasi back in the summer, but he was, you know, new to this role this year, and he's been here a year now doing this, so it's time, and we'll figure out what that means in this generation, I think. But hopefully, I think that's a tool that you could use, frankly, without a lot of council support.